This is a bunch of work to do.
All right. We're good. All right. Good evening and welcome to the May thirteenth, twenty twenty five joint work session. Please note that all council members are here. However, Angela might be. I'm with that. We've got a pretty, oh my goodness, this is a lot of paper. Is that a quite a bunch of stuff that we're going to be talking about tonight? Are there any? Any questions about what the work, not the work session, that's council. Chief, council meeting is gonna be.
I don't know if you wanted to talk about the renaming.
Sure. Let's talk about the meeting.
Just briefly, this isn't something that we've discussed in a work session with regard to renaming the Marshall White Center, the Marshall White Center. And the Lions Den, the Lions Den, though, as we were doing research for preparing for the for the fieldhouse naming. We, I discovered that if a building has been torn down, then you have to rename it if that's the name you want to give it. So that's why they're on the agenda. We didn't think it needed to go to our work session.
So had we left a wall, we wouldn't have to do this. Right?
I, I think we'd still have.
I was just curious.
And the same with Bill Lyons, Jim. There was a couple of questions that came up about REA interlocal agreement. I don't know. No, David, can you talk about that? Sarah's not here right now. We just had a couple of questions. I think. Yeah, it just to try to get some answers before we get to the.
On which interlocal agreement, the one with the city or?
The Adams CRA.
But there's like four.
Oh, yeah, it's in general. It's a general question, I think. But it's gonna set to expire in twenty.
Forty. Forty-four?
Current one is twenty forty-four.
That's.
And it's gonna be, I know, get pushed out to twenty.
We're not, yeah, we're not really changing the term so much. It's just changing the participation levels. And then the main point of the amendment is we're increasing the budget. We're so right now we're nearing the the maximum budget for that particular CRA district. And so there's more projects that are coming to us that need support. And so we're, we've asked our partners to, if they're okay with increasing the budget so we can do these projects. And so we're moving it. Yeah, we're increasing the budget.
And if we don't extend it or don't change the parameters and we're done, will we start, will any, will we have any increment coming in from that? Now, or are we?
Yes. Yeah, there's still increment coming for the foreseeable for the rest of the term, but it's just going to, we'll just be. We won't be able to help with any additional projects other than what's already in the system. So, or service took a portion of our, that building took a portion. And then the other projects that we already have, such as the Monarch was part of that. The apartments just to the south, to the north of the Monarch, you know, that was part of it. So it all takes a piece of it. And so we don't have much in the way of the budget left. And so we would be, if we don't do anything, then we won't be able to do any tax increment financing for any additional projects in the district.
Okay.
So that's why we've asked for a budget increase.
Okay. Yeah.
So, yeah, thanks for asking those. I, I just had two questions. First of all, it sounded like you mentioned, you touched on already. So we've already talked to the school district and the county, and they're okay with that. I didn't know if we were first and then we, we do this and then we go talk to them or if we talk to them and then come back and do this.
This time we, we talked to them. I think we've talked about it in general in this meeting, but but we didn't have the support yet from the county or the school district. So over the last few months, we've been working with them in work sessions and both, I both the school district and and the county and gone through that discussion. And then most recently, the school district approved it, the board approved it a couple of weeks ago, and the county approved it this morning.
And then I just, I was reading in here and just, just help me clarify there, just clarify this for me. Let me find it. It says. It talks about the, each of the entities participating in a hundred percent. And then it says, as such, the increase in property tax revenue from projects in the district would not be realized by the taxing entities until A, the district expired, when the entity's participation, sorry, when the entity's participation ended, or C, when the maximum tax increment amount committed to projects was reached. And we're at that point. Is that correct?
We're getting close to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and so, and if things go as we project, you know, the taxicomment financing participation will probably be done before the end of that term. Just because we'll reach another budget cap, if you will. And so the budget provides for a maximum amount that can be realized. So as sooner we get done with that. And that's why, you know, in the past, we used to do a hundred percent participation. And then you'd get through the whole budget a lot faster, but then there's not as much pass through to the taxing entities. And so so we've, though the taxing, including the city RDA, will get funds faster out of the increment if we lower the participation rate. And so that's the pass through we keep talking about. And so the new agreement is going to increase the pass through. And so we're looking at seventy-five percent going forward after, I think, twenty twenty-seven. So, so the county and the school board like that, you know, and so, but it does make the, it extends the term a little bit in terms of how long it'll take to reach the cap. But once we get to the cap or the end of the term, and we expect we'll reach the cap first, then all of the increment from those new developments gets turned on.
Okay.
Gets distributed to all the taxing.
That's what I was trying to make sure on that. So, thank you.
So.
That helped?
That helps.
Okay. Any other questions? Great.
And so part, part of the discussion later tonight too, that we'll kind of touch on that briefly again, just as an outline, and it'll make even more sense, I think, because we'll have, we have a few slides to show that illustrate that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks, Dave.
But yeah, we appreciate our, we couldn't do it without our partners in the county and, and the school board. So say, we, yeah, we'd be lost without them. So appreciate.
Well, that, that was back in February that we talked about it. So that was way back machine.
Oh, was it? Yeah. Yeah, right.
Thanks, David. I can see the, the reps here. Do you mind if I have them come up first? So that they don't have to sit through the rest of the budget unless you want to, then you, you may, but. You've got TJ Scott, right?
Yeah, there you go. John Thomas and then Alex Sanders. Let's have maybe the police get together and then, is that okay? And then fire and then hang out for a minute. Okay.
Just right here?
That'd be great. Yeah.
Yes.
No, no, we can stand. We honestly, we can stand.
Another chair.
More than happy to stand.
We got them coming from all directions.
Extremely accommodating.
And you just have to cut somewhat loud, but not super loud.
So I'm TJ Scott. I'm employed with the Ogden City Police Department. I'm currently assigned down at the Narcotics Task Force, which is my excuse for my appearance today, my hair and beard, on the scraggly side. So I've been the president for the Ogden City, the OPVA for about six months now. And you guys have called me in here to speak on some of the feelings of the members of that. So the biggest thing I have is not a lot of people have approached me and generally I take no news as good news. So we'll have our member meetings and those are the opportunities for the members to come forward and voice any kinds of concerns or gripes that they have as far as internally within our department or to extend up to the city council level. And as far as right now goes, I've had very few gripes or complaints. And what that tells me is that people feel like they're being taken care of. So I've had multiple people reach out to me and explain that their appreciation for the city council. I understand you guys put the employees first on the budgetary meetings and things of that nature. And you guys have made it very clear that you guys have a priority in securing raises for us is the COLA raise and as far as the merit raises go. So I really have not had any complaints that are worth bringing up in this meeting. And I just know that people are very happy with how they're being treated now. There's several things that set us apart from other agencies in the in the area, and that's the support of the city council, the support of the mayor and our relationship with our prosecutor's office. Yeah. I think a lot of our employees are very happy here, and I think that stops a lot. When people have spoken about leaving to another place, that's often the reason for staying is that sense of support from those, from those entities. Yeah, that's it.
Thanks for the invitation to come speak with you. My name is John Thomas. I'm the the vice president for the Weber FOP. I represent the Ogden Police Department members. And like TJ just said, we're very happy right now. I've been associated with Ogden Police Department for twenty-seven years now. I've been around for the, the bad times, and I've been around for the good times. And I, as an employee, I represent the other employees. I want to thank you, members of the city council for the work you're doing. For the mayor, the city administration, as well as the PD administration. Like TJ just said, the guys, men and women are happy. They're happy that they're being recognized for the work that they're doing. The time that they put in to make Ogden a good community to work and live in. As a recruiter for the police department, I have a great job. You see all the stories in the news about other agencies who are low on manpower. I got people calling me every day to come and work for Ogden City. And I tell them, we're supported from the city council, mayor, chief on down. And that means a lot to people. And that's why they're coming. The pay is, is coming up. The benefits are great compared to other agencies. And it's, it's a great place to work. So I applaud you guys. I know that, you know, budgets are tight. But I applaud you for looking toward the, the employees and giving them the COLA and the I guess, the, the ways to feed their family and, and make a good living. So I thank you. I do ask that with the growth that we're having in the city, all the town homes and apartment buildings, that the administration still consider doing a employee manpower study. Because we're, we're becoming a big city and we need the, the people to operate and police the city as well as several other positions within the city. So if we can continue to have that manpower study done, so we can see where we can be at, that initiative. So other than that, thank you, guys.
Great. Thanks for what you guys are doing.
Yeah.
Oh, for sure. Yeah.
Thank you for those, those reports. I, that really makes me feel pretty good. I, yeah, we, we try to keep up with, with what's going on around the world, but our budgets are both better than some cities have. But as far as recruiting goes, thank you so much for the work you're doing. I mean, I think you really stuffed it up when, when you got hired to do that. You seem to have some kind of a magic sauce you use. So how is it going right now as far as it, what, what are the, what are the reasons people do leave and why, you know, I mean, are there, or are they just circumstances in their lives?
Ah, circumstances. Knock on wood. We haven't really had anybody leave because they weren't happy with the city. It was, it's usually they want like the last couple of guys that I know of, one moved to Indiana. He wanted some property. We have a guy, his wife's in medical school, so he'll be leaving for that. But there's nothing that I've heard, and maybe TJ can speak on it, but there's nothing that I've heard that they were unhappy with pay, morale, the department, how they're treated or anything like that. Everybody right now is happy. And as far as recruiting goes, and I tell the chief this all the time, my job is easy. I sell what he's doing. I sell what you guys are doing. And it makes my job very easy. I go and tell people, this is what happens. This, this is how you're treated. This is what you'll get. And then, you know, because they think I'm the salesman, they go and ride with an officer, the officer tells them the same thing. Then they get hired and they see the same thing. And for example, right now, Cache County, they're hurting. And we're, I hate to say this, but we, I, I'm up to like five people from Cache County who are now coming down to Ogden to work. They're making that commute forty-five minutes because it's a good city. One guy came, found out how good it was, and he's telling everybody else, and they're calling me up, and they're now coming down. Yeah. So next time you're in Logan Canyon, if you see a hogging car go by, you know, that's one of the guys. So, yeah.
Well, thank you. Like, you know, it is, you guys are the foundation of what, what happens in Ogden. If we don't have a good police force, everything else falls, falls apart. So thank you for you doing, but and fire. I don't, I don't.
Oh, I agree.
I, I, I think that our, our public service folks are, are critical. I sleep very well at night, knowing you guys are on the job. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Alex, you're, you moved the chair out so you don't feel like you're sitting up there alone.
I don't need two of them side by side just yet. I think I know most of you. My name's Alex. I am the president of the IAFF Local five-five-two, which is Ogden's chapter of the International Firefighters Union. For those of you who don't know me, I've been in that position for five years now. I've been with the department for eleven years now. And it seems to me, to echo what the police said, people have never been happier, as far as I can tell. Wages have never been better. I think we're competing at a level that we've never competed at before. And it seems like since we started doing lateral hires, we're getting interest from people out of the state, which I've never seen before. We just hired somebody from Alabama, somebody from Florida. And these are, these are new things. These people want to come to the West because of, for whatever reason, they like fly fishing or what have you. They don't know anything about Utah, and they just start looking into places to work. And Ogden is one of them that comes up. They see what we pay. They see what the call volume that we run, which is busy, and they like it. And, and that's what brought them here. So to me, that is very reassuring. It's, it's huge for us. And to kind of, at the risk of sounding repetitive, I want to, you know, extend that, that thank you just for letting me be here and speak to you today with the things that are happening at the state level. And the fact that you invited me to be here today is just proof in my mind, kind of the relationship that we have at the city level. And I've never felt anything but support from the city council. And, and in light of the things that are happening at the state level, that's just so huge for us. It's huge for the firefighter union. I didn't mention this before, but we represent ninety percent of our firefighters in the union. Most of the, most of that ten percent are at the administrative level. So as far as firefighters, actual boots on the ground, seeing that we're getting invited to city council sessions despite the fact that House Bill two sixty seven is trying to put the kibosh on some of that stuff. And that is so reassuring to them, and it means a lot. So I just really want to extend a humongous thank you for that and for what you're doing with the wages. Like I mentioned, that's just wind in our sails. And I think people are very excited to work in Ogden right now. So that's all the good stuff. It's all good stuff. And I think probably from your perspective, sometimes it feels like it's never enough, I'd imagine, right? Because we're, we come here to ask for things. And I'm not gonna pretend that that's not part of what my presentation is today. We're busy. We're very, very busy. And our workload per firefighter is higher than anybody else in the state. And so again, to echo what police said, trying to get more firefighters to do the job in Ogden is is would be tremendously beneficial for us. We have just over a hundred firefighters. We ran twenty two thousand calls, and I have some more numbers in my slides here. But we run three handed engines. And the NFPA, if you don't know what that is, that's the National Fire Protection Agency. It dictates SOPs kind of nationwide for how firefight fire departments should run. And they suggest that cities of our size should be running four handed engines and in some cases, five or six handed trucks. Now, that being said, as you mentioned, Ogden City has a different financial requirement than maybe some other cities. So I'm not asking the world, I don't think, in suggesting that four handed fire engines is something realistic that we could we could do long term. This is not something that I I expect to happen overnight. And so to get to the kind of main thesis of of my topic here, I've got, it's really hard to read on that slide, but I've got a little video for you that explains it a little better. And bear with me, it's it's a little bit dated, but what it explains is what the NFPA is, how they came to these numbers. They're not just shooting from the hip, but it's from studies that they did on structured fires. And if it doesn't work, I can always do my best to interpret. I tend to have that effect on technology. I have a flip phone, so I'm not a guy.
You can wear that as a badge of honor, Alex. A lot of people are giving up their smartphones, going back to the flip phone and just use a phone for what a phone is.
Yeah, I think if you have the means to do it, I recommend it. Made my life better.
You may have heard about NFPA seventeen ten, the industry standard for career fire departments. But what is it? And what does it mean for our community? Your house is on fire. It's your worst nightmare. In just three minutes, a fire can grow sixteen times larger than when it started. And it continues to grow bigger and faster every second. Once the clock starts ticking, there's a shrinking window of opportunity to save lives and property. You want a full crew of firefighters to put it out quickly, or you may suffer a catastrophic loss. But how many are enough? Fifty? Twenty? Forty? How do you decide? Fortunately, there's an internationally recognized industry standard. It's called NFPA seventeen ten. And it's based on scientific evidence and research that establishes how many firefighters are needed to put out each fire and rescue anyone trapped. At a fire scene, you want a firefighter doing every job that needs to be done to save you and your house. And at a fire, there's a lot that needs to be done, like stretching the hose, hooking to a hydrant, searching for trapped people, venting the hot gases, and much more. For a low hazard, single family house fire, NFPA seventeen ten specifies a minimum of fifteen firefighters dispatched in the initial alarm. At an open air strip shopping center or garden apartment fire, the standard specifies a minimum of twenty eight firefighters dispatched in the first alarm. And for fires in high rise buildings at least seven stories tall, the data show that the initial dispatch should be for a minimum of forty three firefighters. And that fire department should send additional firefighters to situations that are beyond the capability of the initial alarm. When considering crew size on each engine and truck responding to a fire, the standard says that in low hazard response areas like residential neighborhoods, the required number of firefighters on each fire engine and truck is four. In areas with a high number of incidents or geographic restrictions like narrow roads, single access bridges or islands, a minimum of five firefighters on each fire engine and ladder truck is required. And in dense urban areas with high hazard occupancies like high rise buildings, the minimum number of firefighters on each fire engine or truck is six. Regardless of the type of property, seventeen ten also sets the time of arrival on scene within four minutes for the first engine with four firefighters. The seventeen ten standard for both response time and crew size is based on scientific evidence, not opinion. The National Institute of Standards and Technology, known as NIST, and its partners conducted extensive research to document the optimal crew sizes for various types of structures. As a decision maker, you and firefighters share a common goal. Everyone gets out alive. So when a house is on fire, just remember, it takes a minimum of fifteen firefighters to put it out. And the responding crews should have the right number of firefighters on each engine and truck. The quicker the response time, the better the outcome for everyone. For more information, talk to your local firefighters. Thanks for listening and stay safe.
Yeah, thanks for bearing with me through that. It was kind of a horny mission, but you get the idea. And right now, as I mentioned, we're running three handed fire engines and trucks, and in some instances, we're running two handed fire engines. So as you all are aware, the occupancy is changing in Ogden. The amount of high rise buildings and multifamily dwellings has increased astronomically. Obviously, I don't know the exact number, but the risk associated with those structures is much higher than the risk associated with single family dwellings. And there have been countless case studies to prove that. I don't want to use scare tactics and give you ridiculous scenarios that may or may not happen, but I can assure you that that the risk involved, I don't think it's too far of a stretch to suggest that the risk involved that has a building with a hundred people in it is obviously going to create unique situations that require more people. As we saw this most recent fire that took down that apartment building that was under construction, I mean, that was our third one in, I think, five years that was that size. And and luckily, they've all been in the construction phase. But I think it's only a matter of time before a genuine fire happens in one of those buildings that's occupied. And that's going to create a lot of issues for us because right now we treat every single fire the same with regard to who we dispatch, how many people we send on the first alarm. We treat a multifamily dwelling, a high rise and a residential structure fire, all the same with with regard to that first initial alarm. Now, if the incident commander, which is any good, which ours are, they'll call for a second alarm based off of what that is. And they'll work around the system and find a way to get more people there through mutual aid and what have you. But one thing that more firefighters could also do for us is it could leave certain apparatus within our city limits. So right now, if we have a firefighter or a fire downtown, it's more than likely that all of our fire suppression apparatus are going to that fire, which means that Ogden City is now left in a situation to be vulnerable. Now it's requiring mutual aid in order if a second fire should should break out. Should we increase our staffing? What that could theoretically do is increase the amount of firefighters on that initial dispatch and leave one of our fire engines in our city to continue to respond to those fires. Now, this is something that happened on that fire that I mentioned that was across the street from Station One. Luckily, we we did what was called a callback, so we had overtime people come. I was one of those people and we manned a fire engine and we were able to respond to emergencies while they were fighting that fire. But if we had correct staffing, we wouldn't need to pay people. That would be already in our system, which would be huge for our citizens, in my opinion, in the opinion of the union, and I'm sure the administration. And to further this idea, so some of the things that we're doing to decrease workload is coming from the top down. So this transfer ambulance, the homeless medical advocate, these are things that are really, really helping us. This is helping us decrease some of that fatigue that is associated with being on some of those busier apparatus. But that's increased workload at the administrative level. So now you have administrators who are doing what is essentially three full time jobs in running medical, running a transfer division, running a homeless advocate division. So we're one of the few departments who are not top heavy. I think we're understaffed all the way from the chief administrative level all the way through to the bottom. And this is a result of of years and years of high call volume. And something that happened well before, I think, my time and and more than likely all of your time as well. So this is just something that I think we've had to combat over decades, Ogden being a really busy place with regard to EMS and fire calls. So here's some more numbers for you. You can see Salt Lake City Unified, they run not terribly more amount of calls, but they do it with five times, three times the amount of stations and firefighters. Now granted, call volume is not the only thing that dictates a fire station and firefighters, right? Also geographical location and some of those things as well. But it gives you an idea of just how busy we are when I compare it to someplace like West Valley, who has one more station, more firefighters, and ran ten thousand less calls than we did. South Davis Metro, another comparable sized department, same amount of stations, less firefighters, true, but a a third of the amount of calls that we ran. And then I just put in that metric there of when the last time we added fire stations was. So obviously, we've been renovating fire stations, but that doesn't increase staffing. The last time we increased our amount of stations and staffing was in the sixties. And obviously, our call volume has greatly increased since the sixties. We didn't provide EMS service in the sixties. They ran a lot more fires than we did. That's true. But when we run fires, because of the the plastics that is into today's manufacturing processes, the amount of time that fires in the incipient stage, growth stage and end stage is much, much quicker because those plastics put off BTUs at a much higher rate than old materials did. So we may get less firefighters because of suppression systems. We're one of the few professions that have been trying to put ourselves out of business since we started. We've done a fairly good job of it. But when we do get a fire, it burns faster, it burns hotter. And these lightweight construction multifamily dwellings are likely to catch fire much quicker. So that's all I've got for you. I do want to say one more time just how grateful I am to be here. I really genuinely appreciate you guys inviting me here. And what you guys are doing for us, just just like John mentioned, I mean, is just so so huge for us. And and everybody loves being busy to a degree, of course, right? We love working in Ogden for that reason. We feel like real firefighters, unlike some of those other places. So so we're happy to be busy within reason. And I think it's time that we just, within the next few decades, start considering the fact that we may need to start increasing our staffing levels on this fire. Questions?
Eric and I, just, I feel like I have this question every year, and I'm sure you've answered it, and I just don't remember. But on that call volume, does that include the mutual aid calls or is that just Ogden City?
That includes mutual aid calls, but let me say that with this caveat. Mutual aid is far benefiting us far more than it is adding to that call volume of us going to outside cities. The, I'd say ninety percent of the times that mutual aid happens, it's people coming into Ogden City because all of our ambulances are busy.
Okay.
And the reason why they keep doing it, because I think if I were the mayor of Roy, I'd probably say I'm not going to send an ambulance to your city anymore. But the reason why they keep doing it is because we really benefit them with regard to mutual aid when it comes to a structured fire. We have more staffing and capabilities with fire suppression than they do typically. And this is the world according to Alex. Maybe not everybody would agree with the statements I'm making here today, but that's the way I see it, and I think the way a lot of people see it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We we value your wisdom and knowledge.
I do have a question. I I'm just looking at those those numbers. They just went away. But what numbers, you know, the ones where we haven't, you know, put another fire station together since sixty eight.
Yeah.
Our population is certainly not the same as it was then.
Right.
What has happened to allow us make that even work? I mean, what what's changed? I guess that's my question.
Well, I think good leadership is what has allowed that to happen. We've found ways to make it work. And in many cases, we've decreased staffing on certain fire apparatus, but the type of call volume has changed as well. We're running a lot more EMS calls than we were in the sixties.
Right.
So that's part of it. And the other part of it is, truth be told, over decades, the fire administrators have been asked to do more with less, and they've they've found ways to do it.
Yeah.
And I think we're an all hazards fire department. We respond to hazmat, rescue emergencies, fire and EMS, and then some. And that has been on the, that's been on the backs of the firefighters. They have, they've been required over these decades to learn more in order to keep up, basically. And and but to more directly answer your question, I think part of the reason is because the the type of calls have changed as well. That that being said, the risk has increased greatly as well. I think departments can be either progressive or they can be responsive. And unfortunately, in general, the fire service is responsive in nature. Some major incident has to occur to then open people's eyes and say, okay, well, now we need more people because people want numbers. And numbers don't necessarily correlate to risk. And right now, in my opinion, the risk is high because we have so many multifamily dwellings. We don't have enough firefighters to properly deal with that situation.
Well, thank you for bringing those, that that information is really enlightening. So thank you for bringing them.
Yeah, yeah, I tried to make it as numerical as I could because I know how valuable it is to have numbers. But like I said, I sometimes risk is, you can't put risk in numbers sometimes.
Thank you.
That's I hope what that that video showed a little bit too.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? All right. Once again, thanks, you guys.
Thanks, Alex.
And kicking us off in this budget session.
Thank you very much.
I think if you don't mind, Gary, just kind of looking through the, are you ready to, are you ready to get the hammer? All right, good. We're ready to give you the hammer.
I guess we have new microphones, huh? Well, so I know from the other executive directors, you'll get a lot of show and tell as to what their servants involved in and that sort of thing. Typically, I haven't done that because most of what I'm involved in is the training client, which I usually don't do that in an open session. But I did want to come and talk to you about the one and only budgetary we have this year as opposed to prior years. And that is, we're proposing a new position, an evidence technician focusing on trial evidence regarding videos. And this comes from the the management audit and study that you all sponsored a couple of years ago and came out about a year ago. And as a result of that study, it basically compared what we were doing with other cities, and it found that we're for the same volume, we were understaffed by two attorneys and two staff members. And and additionally, we need something that would help us with this new volume of video. The consultant did say it was an emergency that we could gradually increase. And so it's not like I'm really holding back by saying we're not going to hire any attorneys or other staffers at this time. But I think the video um evidence tech is one area that we can really make a huge difference. In the last few years, as you can imagine, video is everywhere, including on our officers. It's in, it's in um, businesses and especially retail businesses. And so we we do Bs and Cs and our most um, probably our most uh significant crimes are DUIs and domestic abuse. But we do a lot of retail theft and that sort of thing. And so there might be um, five or six security cameras. Or if somebody gets arrested in a domestic violence case, we might have four or five officer um body cameras that we have to be gone through in order to prepare for trial. And so as we were talking to the consultant, even before he finished his report, we were talking about this need. And we asked and and were able to find some temporary money to hire a part-time um evidence tech with videos. And that's what we've been using for the last year. And it's worked out great because that that person can do what our attorneys would have to do without being paid an attorney's wage. And so it really is a big savings. They don't have to get prepared for trial by going through all these hours and hours of video. They can train or to kind of look through and and know it's important, grab that for them and preserve it. And so right now, we're using that person mostly to prepare for trials. What we'd like to do now is make that a full-time position. And how we think that will help us is that it'll expand their use before trials. And will help us help the attorneys gather the facts on some significant cases before trial in the pre-trial conference time period. So we can start to to resolve cases before they ever go to trial. So it's been a great success the last year having a part-timer. We anticipate great success as a full-time. We do think this will push off our need to hire more legal um staff for a while. And that's really our goal, is to meet our needs and um, and still balance the budget. That's the goal. Do you have any questions for me?
Gary, when we do contracted um work, so. Mel Smith comes to mind when you.
Yeah.
But where does that come out? Does that come out of your budget or some other?
It it does come out of our budget unless there's a, sometimes there's a specific project that we hired some contract attorneys from. And then it could come out from one of the department budgets or from risk management budget. But from the Mel Smith, there is, there is a pot of money for um. And and there's been no request to change that, yeah.
My question is, cases that you turn over to Weber County attorneys, is there a budgetary expense to Ogden City for those cases, or does that, is that covered?
They handle the cost of those cases.
And those cases, and the, and the, which particular cases do you turn over to?
They're mostly Class As and felonies. And so occasionally, I'll do a few misdemeanors if it's wrapped up to a to a larger level felony case. Um, so we do, we do Bs and Cs and we do infractions, but we don't do felonies, we don't do Class As. We'll tell you this, though, um, you might get the impression that these are just kind of small-time criminals that we're dealing with, and certainly many are. But also, many people that are committing significant felonies today committed a misdemeanor. And today, the police department wants to make them accountable for that and get them to start changing their behavior. So very often, we'll be dealing with um, people that have a very long and serious criminal history. But today, they're gonna be um charged with a misdemeanor to try to change their conduct. And so even though um, we may, we're at a lower level, where we are, we are working to change and and make accountable some people that otherwise wouldn't be.
So those types of charges that you're working against, you're trying to avoid jail time? Is that what you're saying? You're trying to reform people?
But what we're trying to do is change behavior, right?
Right.
The idea, it's an imperfect idea. The idea is the more you make people accountable, the less likely they're going to engage in additional criminal activity. And so we want to support our police officers in that goal. And so when they bring us a a misdemeanor case, we take it seriously. And this will help us to do that.
Other questions for Gary? So, so the the video, is that part of grandma too? Is that?
No, no, it's not so much grandma because uh, um, it's a whole different system for criminal discovery versus um civil grandma. But um, I suppose if they had extra time and somebody had a grammar request on a criminal matter, they might be called to go through and and look through a grammar requested video. That's a possibility they could do. But the idea, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Gary. I just, I I wasn't able to find enough information in the packet. But just comparing budgets, year to year to year, uh, your budget in twenty twenty-four was one point five four six million dollars. And uh, it proposed for twenty-six is two point four. An increase of eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in two years. That's a fifty-five percent increase. Is there something that's been driving uh, costs into your budget?
My guess is there's a mistake in there somewhere. So, you have any ideas?
Can't imagine what.
Yeah.
So there was a four hundred and eighty-four thousand uh debit. Credit, I don't know which side. It was a negative in twenty twenty-four. So I don't know what that, enterprise administration allocation.
Let us, let us do a work.
Yeah, that, that's a year-end adjustment we do to allocate uh costs. So we, we take five percent for the utilities covered administrative overhead. At the end of the year, we allocate that out to every department. So it's simply a reclassification of revenue to uh, uh, reduce the expense account. I, we can go into more detail than that.
To the best of my knowledge, we have not increased our budget other than cost of living increases, that sort of thing, and maybe a few temporary accounts.
Yeah, I remember you had some temporaries, and then you got this part-time uh evidence technician last year.
Right.
But other than that, I mean, you're one of those smaller.
Yeah, yeah, my guess is it's, it's, it's apples and oranges as to what you're comparing.
Okay.
But we'll.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think to that, to Lisa's point, the enterprise adjustment for twenty twenty-five hasn't occurred yet and won't occur until the end of June. And then it might line up a little better than.
Yeah, when we budget negative numbers like that, it makes it very hard for someone to manage their budget. So we want Gary to manage to the budget you've given him, just do a year-end adjustment.
Okay, all right, that's clarifying some things for me. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, and there's significant amount in professional and technical as well, that is there.
Yeah, there's some carryover from past years. And the professional and technical is one thing that. You know, if you're really looking for money and you say, well, go, we'll go, we'll grab that piece of money, it won't kill me because I don't need it today. But I may need it sometime in the next few months, I just don't know. And so it's kind of there as a leftover from what, from big projects that we were doing. And occasionally, we have big projects where you have to hire outside counsel. That was a kind of a leftover from the Wonder Block project.
Okay.
But it ha, it isn't replicated each year, it's just leftover from.
So it carries forward.
Yeah.
And inflates your budget.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
And Gary.
Good question, Dave. All right, um, I think we've got Justin. For the next few items. So if you want to start with the general revenue, general fund revenue stuff.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Council. It's a pleasure with you tonight to go over a few different items on the agenda. Um, first, talking about general fund revenues and and I'll touch a little bit about um, other funds as well. And parts of some of the increases. And then we'll just walk through um, some different things in regards to revenue. So um, feel free to stop me along the way if you have questions. Um, but I'll, I'll just keep going unless there isn't any. So uh, to begin with, I just wanted to show the the breakdown. I think this is really a good picture to show of what makes up the general fund revenue. Um, almost sixty-four percent of the general fund revenue comes through taxes, through sales tax, property tax, and other taxes that are received. And then you can see the impact of the other different type, revenue types that we have, licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenue, charges of services, fines and forfeits, interest miscellaneous revenue and other financing. Again, other financing, that that one's a bigger one. Um, and what that one usually, that one includes um, the transfer from the utilities. The the twelve percent is included in that twelve million as well as a use of fund balance, which we'll talk a little bit more about. So that is a breakdown of the different categories, major categories that we track um, for revenues in the, in the general fund.
So the. Intergovernmental is not the transfers we make?
No, the intergovernmental, those would be coming from other agencies, so those would be from county, state.
Okay.
Um, those types, so uh, that, the most, majority of that seven million is um, are actually transportation and beans and nutrients.
Okay.
Uh, so here's a breakdown of the uh, the, of the taxes in the, in the budget. Um, so you can see the the propose, the adopted fiscal year twenty-five versus the proposed fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, property taxes, we're proposing to increase seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, which is just over three and a half percent. Uh, sales tax, again, we're proposing to leave flat, and I I'll show some information in a moment, um, a little bit more on sales tax. Uh, franchise taxes um, is, we're proposing a slight increase there, uh, just based on actual activities. Um, and then our fee and lose, same thing, a slight increase based on actual activities that we've experienced. So overall, the increase in uh, the adopted versus the proposed, the twenty-five adopted versus the twenty-six proposed is just under a one and a half percent increase.
Justin?
Yeah.
Um, franchise taxes, you know, we, we, we kind of talked about that last year or something. Uh, we're, we're not getting as much franchise, franchise tax from uh, landlines, phone, phone companies. And all of those kind of things and the things that people are replacing it with is fiber and things like that. But we don't, don't get anything from that, do we?
Correct, not on the fiber, but we do, so I I just, as far as Comcast goes, we have seen an uptick over the last year, a slight one. Um, or at least the the decrease has slowed, we're experiencing. So, but you're correct, um, at this time, we don't collect any franchise for, for any fiber at all.
I I wonder, and you maybe don't know the answer to this, but I just wonder if there's any talk about that at the legislature, how how that thing might work out.
Not that I'm aware of, I, that might be a question more for the mayor or or.
And do we have a? You know, a, a strategy to deal with that going forward, you know, as as those numbers keep going down.
Right, it's something that we'll definitely need to keep an eye on if it, if we do continue to see a drop. The overall amount of the Comcast revenue isn't much. That not, that seven or nine million dollars in franchise taxes is majority made up from um, Enbridge and Rockwell Power. That's where most of those franchise taxes come from.
Okay.
So the portion related to Comcast is quite smaller, quite a bit smaller. Uh, so in looking at the detail, I know the mayor, when he presented last week, talked that there is no proposed property tax increase in this budget. Uh, the increases, as you can see, this is how it is made up. Um, so if we were to just go off the certified tax rate, that twenty-one point six million, that's what would be the, our starting point. And then uh, we always factor in new growth that we experience. Uh, we have factored in a two percent of new growth, which is approximately four hundred and thirty thousand. Again, no proposed increase uh to property taxes. But we do have two areas that are expiring this year, the, the, in the RDA, the Lincoln area and the Fairmont, Fairmount area are both um expiring. And so as you can see, we estimate that we'll, that the city will be experiencing an increase of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of additional property tax revenue with those two areas expiring. So this puts us, gives us an overall budget of just under twenty-three million.
Justin, on that new growth, is that projected or do we get that data from somewhere?
It's, it's what we've experienced over the years. There's been some years it's been higher, um, but it's, it's just an estimated amount. The county doesn't buy that information to us.
I think people would look at the area and say, man, there's new apartment buildings going up everywhere. Shouldn't there be more new growth, new growth as a result of that?
Right, it's something that we will continue to keep an eye on when it comes to with that new growth, with those, the amount of I, uh, properties that are going up instead of.
Yeah, okay.
Brandon, I have another question too, just based on the property tax.
Excuse me?
Is the percentage, are they changing because of the increase in property values? Or are you anticipating that property values will stay the same, so the tax stays the same?
The way that they build that that levy out is that we would get the same amount regardless of the the values go up or down. And so depending on what that comes out, we'll determine what that certified tax rate is. And so at this point, we would, without proposing any kind of change to whatever that certified tax rate ends up being, we would anticipate receiving the same amount plus um, some uh, new growth.
So what's the, how did, does that remain constant then, as far as the income from that tax revenue? Or can that shift based on if there are appreciations or devaluations of homes?
It would, it would, the way that they build it is for us to receive the same amount of revenue. And so regardless of if values increase or decrease, that certified tax rate is built in a way so that the rate will adjust so that we would still experience the same amount of of revenue each year. Um, the only time that would change is if we propose to increase that rate. So if their values go up, in theory, their rate would go down for the city to hold, which is. But if we were to keep the rate flat for them, that's where they would, that's where we would experience an increase in revenue, if that makes sense. So there's a lot of different.
Cause I was like, how are you gonna answer that?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, cause it also does, that doesn't reflect if your particular property values go up or down. Because that's.
Correct.
Another.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's so many factors at play. And then, and then we're only a portion of that property tax bill too, right? So a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, it's gonna give us those last.
So last year, we increased that slightly.
We certified a higher rate.
What we did last year is we kept the rate flat in the prior year. So we were able to, we were able to capture that appreciation that happened in the overall values of the city. And that's what created a property tax increase, even though the rate on their property tax bill stayed the same. We received more revenue because the value went up. If we had not done that, if we kept this certified tax rate, then the way that it would have calculated out, we would have received the same amount of revenue. But their rate may have shown going down. It all depends too on the the values that come out. So for me, I live in Harrisville, and there were a couple entities that did do property tax increases last year, but my bill went down because my house value went down. And so there's, just because there's so many entities that are involved in in the calculation for the prop, for property taxes.
You are saying your property tax went down?
Yes, my.
I, I have never heard that from anyone.
Well, and mine would have, so looking at.
Yeah.
We did last year, I would have paid forty-six dollars or something like that less if we had not kept the rate where we did. We, even though we did a truth in taxation.
Right.
And we increased the rate, I would have, I paid the same amount that I would have the year before because we didn't let it go down.
Well, I remember this shift a couple of years ago, you know, John Bond came in and talked about the ratio between commercial and and residential split. A lot of, you know, it, it, it really imbalanced the the residential. And uh, I didn't know if that's reversed, that trend is reversing or not, I don't know, if all that's happening or not. It's just value, you know, it's just, I, yeah, I had, I had the same conversation with a lady last night.
Very confusing.
And it's really confusing to people.
Because when Janine puts out the, the chart that shows when we don't do something that keeps up with inflation, we're losing money. So it's way, anyway, it'd be interesting to play out a couple of different ways and see what actually happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, Glenn, Glenn's presentation had a sample of five or ten properties.
Right.
You could see across the board, but regardless of what happened, some would pay more and some would pay less in any circumstance.
And then if you're in the year where your house gets revalued, goes up, then it's a totally different ballgame, or down, then it's different too.
I just, I've never heard anybody say, oh, yeah, my taxes went down.
Yeah.
I just, that's just an anomaly.
The value.
Yeah, the value went down.
If you look back in your tax records, I bet you'll see it.
Yeah. Good question.
One last question.
Yeah.
That twenty-one million, six hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred dollars, is that, where does that stack from last year? Where does that?
So based on, based on what we, what council adopted with the rate for fiscal year twenty-five, that's, with that rate, we will be generating twenty-one, twenty-six.
That's the amount.
Yeah, and so that's our starting point, and that's what we would expect to receive if we, if we adopt the certified tax rate again this year with whatever it ends up being. Um, and then we would still expect to receive that, that twenty-one million dollars in revenue from property taxes.
So, so with new growth, I mean, let, let's say we demoed a bunch of buildings too, does that, does that reverse the growth? reverse the growth?
I, to be honest, don't know the answer to that question.
It would depend on how much the land is worth.
Right, it'd be a real.
It might be worth more without buildings on it or might.
I I just kind of wondered if if it if it was a a give or take kind of a thing or whether it's just all the things you're building or adding and those things don't go away. I just didn't know. It's just how it works.
Yeah. Um, so in looking at, I just want to, this is information as far as where we're at year to date in our current year, just to give you an update um, of the fiscal year twenty five revised budget versus what we've received. Um, and you can see, we are, based on the information for property taxes, sales tax, all of our franchise taxes, and our fee and lose, we do project that we'll meet um, our budget in all of those, um, which is good with sales tax. If you recall, last year, we were about half a million dollars short of our budget. Um, we're trending right now to meet our budgeted amount. So that's great news. And speaking of sales tax, this is the trend. I I feel like this is really, we used to count on sales tax, a three, four percent increase in sales tax every year. And then you can see during the COVID years, we experienced a fifteen and and fifteen percent increase in back to back years. Um, but the the last two years and where we're at today, we're, it's definitely slowed. Obviously, there's a lot of factors at play with that that could influence that. Um, but just to give you an idea of why we are proposing to leave sales tax, uh, the budget flat for the third year in a row.
And Brendan, another question. How does that, how is that affected by internet sales where we pay Amazon? Does that, so the revenue come back to our city or?
Yeah, there's the they, when the state passed um, that bill a few years ago that required the the collection of sales tax. Um, so and I can't remember everything that how it's calculated as far as how and where it's remitted to, but yes, we do receive um, sales tax associated. There's it's been part of that bump, I believe, a few years ago was a result of us starting to receive sales tax from Amazon. That was a a big jump.
It it comes back to us based on zip code, right?
I believe so.
I I I think it does too, yeah. Okay.
Um, looking at all the other general fund revenues and what the proposed changes are going to be for next year. Um, licenses and permits, we're not proposing any changes there. And we did have some increases over the last few years, but again, we're seeing a leveling out in those categories. So we're not proposing any changes to those revenues. Um, for the intergovernmental, the only one that proposing to change is uh, an increase in our county funds. This is from uh, Weber Human Services uh, funds that we uh, receive in regards to golden hours. And so uh, we're in, we're increasing the revenue that we're expected to receive, but also we an expense line in golden hours for operations. And so that's a slight increase in the intergovernmental uh, revenues. In charges for services, this is where you'll see another big bump from from the prior year. Um, administrative, that includes, um, apologize. Uh, that includes our enterprise admin share. Uh, so that's the five percent uh, revenue that we budget for. So that's that hundred eighty thousand. The nine hundred eighty seven thousand mostly is from us adding in the expected operations budgets for Marshall White. So that's where that nine hundred eighty seven thousand is mainly made up of. So the total increase in charges for services is just over one point one million or or twenty two percent. Um, fines and forfeitures, that group of revenues, again, we're proposing to leave those flat, um, based on activities this year. Uh, we're not proposing to make any changes to those revenues. Uh, interest is another one that's got a big jump and we've talked, I think, a few times about this, um, with what we've, what we have uh, received um, through our investments and with working with Morton, uh, we're proposing to increase the budget. So what this has allowed us to do, um, both with the budget opening that was presented last week and then also with next year's budget is it's helped it so that we've been able to not have to, it's helped with our balancing so that we haven't had to do a property tax increase in this budget. We've been able to use uh, this increase in interest, you know, projected interest to help us with our balancing. And so that's why you see that increase there of a hundred and nineteen percent. Um, is to account for uh, interest that we expect to receive again next year. Um, obviously, that can change quickly with with the environment that we're in. But based on discussions we've had with Morton, we still feel comfortable with with where what we're proposing. Under miscellaneous, uh, the increase there, that forty two thousand, that's um, the the transfer or the the payment from the or the transfer from the RDA uh, for the admin overhead charge that we do each year um, as part of the budget with the RDA. And then under the other other revenues, this is where we have the general fund, the fund balance usage and transfers. The transfers, that eight million, um, that is made up of the the enterprise transfer as well as any other transfers, which would include the transfer from BDO. And I have a a slide here that will, I'll go over what makes up the BDO transfer next year. Um, more specifically, talking about the fund balance, that three point five million, just so that, to make, you know, you all aware as a council, what that, what we're proposing. Um, with the discussions about wages and the unused wages. Uh, last year, we experienced about just over two million dollars of unused wages that we've held in a in fund balance. Um, and we use approximately nine hundred thousand of that in the budget in fiscal year twenty five. We're projecting about the same amount of unused wages again, again, this year, about two million. And so for the budget next year, uh, we're proposing to use two million um, of fund balance for unused wages as part of the uh, the balancing and and helping with fund those increases for employees. Uh, the other one million, five hundred and ninety nine thousand that makes up that fund balance number is a use of restricted funds. Uh, each year, as we receive um, the the BNC Road Fund restricted payments and the active transportation restricted payments, we budget a certain amount and there's been several years that we end up receiving more than what we budget for. And so we've never, so there's a portion that has not been appropriated for use, but what it's allowed us to do is to build up a restricted fund that when we've had some projects that have needed extra funding, we have that as a source. And so in fiscal year twenty five, we did that for Twentieth Street. And engineering has a handful of other projects next year that they want to fund. And so we're pulling from that that bucket again. We still have um, a couple million dollars that we're wanting or a million and a half that we're pulling from that um, restricted fund balance to use for a handful of projects next fiscal year that's been proposed. So that's what makes up that three point five million fund balance usage for next year. Any questions on?
I I do have a question that, uh, you know, the the interest, uh, we're getting more interested in, we're accustomed to. Um, and that was one of the things we got Nick done on the on the audit.
Correct.
Now, you may be answered this already and I was kind of dreaming about something else, like, so if I did, just tell me I already answered it and let's go on, but wha- what are we doing different to make sure that that doesn't happen? Do we have a, do we have a project or some way to move that money or or whatever? To use it so we don't have that issue again or?
Right. So for fiscal year twenty four, we have the finding. So we had about four million dollars that we ran over. So we were proposing in the budget opening that was presented last week to use that four million dollars because we need to either spend it or move it out of the general fund. And so we have that in a budget action that'll be considered next week. Um, but then for this fiscal year and working with Morton, we're projecting that we'll overrun again, obviously. And so we're proposing to increase that revenue line in fiscal year twenty five by three million. And using that to transfer out of the general fund.
Those plans, okay, great. That's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. And so then for next year, by increasing the budget as part of our balancing, we would protect using that revenue to offset expenses.
Nice problem. That's, yeah, that's good. Thanks.
Right, um, so you said something about that same amount of carryover um, from the fund balance in that program, you know, to help pay for those increases. So do we have an idea, it has, and and this is actually came from Dave, but do we have an idea of how many, um, that it seems like there's not been a slowdown in turnover, I guess. So I guess, do you have those numbers somewhere?
I don't, but we can definitely work on getting that.
Isn't that kind of what you're?
Yeah, just one of the goals in raising compensation for our employees was to reduce turnover and the expense that's associated with replacing, hi- hiring and replacing people that leave. And so we've gone through and increased wages as seen an actual drop in the percentage turnover. And I think last year, there was a slide by department to by department to by departments. That would be curious to see that. Well, that's scurried Lisa.
Well, this has been on my mind too. I asked HR to update these numbers for me. So when I present, I I was planning on having those. But we can get them to you as soon as we get them from HR. Um, they did put these numbers together uh, back in January and we did notice some turnover is good. We want to have some turnover. That's healthy for an organization to have. I think in the McGrath study, it recommends a ten percent turnover rate. So we don't want zero turnover. We do want some. But it did appear that those numbers were declining. So I think we'll have a better idea now that we have almost a full year
Mm-hmm.
that we can see, but but it did seem like there was a decrease. So we will get you those.
Great. Thank you, Lisa.
Um, in looking at the amount that makes up the uh, other revenues, so again, this includes that twelve percent utility transfer. Uh, you can see that increase. That's a result of the the utility rate increases um, for water, sanitaries, uh, refuges and storm. Um, and what that amount is, so that's an increase to the general fund. Um, there's a slight decrease in the contribution from quality neighborhoods. So with with the quality neighborhoods initiative, um, if you remember, we, there was a uh, an agreement and I'll talk more about this in the the BDO presentation, but we appropriated, we've been appropriating a million dollars a year to go to um, quality neighborhoods. And of that money, we've been, we've been budgeting a portion of that to come to the general fund to help offset wage costs associated with running the program. And next year, we, and so we've been budgeting a hundred thousand, but we haven't been using a hundred thousand. What we do is we we see how much the actual expense was and then we back that transfer down to what it actually was. So we don't pull as much out of the quality neighborhoods program. Um, in fiscal year twenty five, we brought forward the final year of the quality neighborhoods million. And so in the budget for next year, there's no proposed million. Um, but there still will be an expense to run the program and where we still have funds in quality neighborhoods, we're budgeting of some funds to still cover um, expenses related to to running the program. So that's about fifty thousand is is there for. Um, the transfers from BDO include the Marshall White debt payment. Um, last year, we had a a transfer in to cover um, as part of the general plan update staffing um, under planning. Uh, so we're removing that one time funding. Um, any of those funds that are not spent related to the general plan update for their temporary or under their temporary account will carry that forward until those funds are spent and when they're finished with that project. Um, and then we also had included uh, one time funding to help fund, to begin to fund the grant administrator. Now, through the budgeting process, that is a a full time position that we would include it as part of the budget. This just eliminates the the revenue that came in. So when you look at balancing as a whole, we have, we have accounted for that position. We're not eliminating that position. It is accounted for in the budget. And when we, when we account for those revenues, so you could say that a hundred thousand of the income is to help offset that added position. Um, and then the one transfer in that was added this year or for fiscal year twenty six is for the elections. We do this every other year. Um, we budget for, instead of a but having a budget in the general fund, we 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 do it through one time funds every other year. So that's the hundred and twenty one thousand. So this thing, this represents a a pretty small increase to our our transfers into the general fund of twenty nine thousand, not not a very big increase overall. Um, before I go, any any questions on any of those? Um, sorry, that caught squished on my headers. Uh, so now we're looking at the other funds. So I just, this is just looking at in the packet um, lists all of the funds um, for the city and what their changes are year over year in revenues. So this is a summary of each of our of our funds and what those changes are. Uh, the CIP fund is projected to increase six point four million. Um, that, a lot of it, that's to do with projects that are being proposed. Um, that's where that increase comes from. In the enterprise funds, under the utilities, those increases are all related to either capital improvement or um, which would be a use of their their retained earnings to cover the cost of those or um, the increase from their their utility rate increases. So that's where we see the increase for water, sanitary, refuse and and storm. Um, but with refuse, I just wanted to make a note, refuse is actually a lot bigger. That one point three million is not all related to user rates being increased. That actually is um, is part of our 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 plan for the utilities. It does include the replacement of those refuse trucks.
Uh-huh.
And so this is um, a use of prior year funds to be able to purchase five additional trucks. So we've got in the budget opening for next week to do to do five now to get them ordered. This would be to do five additional next year because there is a lead time. So instead of doing ten all at once, they're trying to eventually spread it out. So this is over two years.
We have ten, right? Our our city does. Okay, so.
Correct.
We see that we we want to spare or I I don't, you know, in case one burns down on the road or?
Well, I think they, I can't remember it. I have to ask Justin how many are in service versus, because I think there is a reserve one that on the refuse.
Refuse, um, yeah, in fact, we're ordering five, five new ones and rotating those out. So we typically have ten in service. And then I believe we have one that we've kept as an older one that is a spare one goes down.
You've got some that are really small for these little roads and stuff.
So we have one, it's called a, like a, we call it the Honall. And typically they go around and they they look kind of like the old style ones where you would show up to the curb and you'd physically
Up in the back?
metal cans. Right, but that one is smaller to be able to go around it to collect it harder places. They're not you know, we can't like off trails, things like that into parks where it's hard to do for a big truck, but we manually grab those and dump them into that machine.
Um, some of the other increases to note, there's a large increase in golf. Um, what that is, is a result of projects that are proposed to be funded in the golf course. Um, there's two projects. I'll talk more about that in the BDO presentation, but that's why there's an increase. There is an increase in the amount of funding coming for projects. Um, other changes, the parking and mobility fund, that one is um, increasing quite a bit. That is a transfer from BDO into the parking and mobility fund uh, to be able to cover the debt for the Wonder Block parking structure. So that that amount will then be um, transferred to the NBA to then make the debt payment. So that's why there's an increase there.
Do you anticipate that that will be an annual uh, transfer from BDO or will the income from parking start to cover that it's itself or what's so projected, projected income from?
So the 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 projected income to cover the cost of the NBA in is supposed to come through the implementation of the parking. Obviously, there's still a timing issue there and 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 what the full amount being generated is. So there there still may be a delta down the road. Um, and at which point that delta would need to be made up and most likely would come through the use of BDO lease revenue. But for next year, the full payment is coming through BDO lease revenue.
Proposed to be.
What was that?
That's the proposal on the budget.
Correct.
Before we move, can I ask about the water utility?
Yes.
You know, we bumped the rates uh, to fund the water line project. How are collections looking when considering our bond debt obligation? Are we are we pulling enough money with the increase that we implemented to make our bond obligations?
Well, at this point, we don't have any obligations because we're still in the construction phase and drawn and we haven't even started drawing down those those loans yet. But as far as revenues, expected revenues, we're still generating based on the performance and with increasing it, I think with seven percent was the rate increase. We're still um, slightly above the targeted amount of what we're project, what we were projecting for revenues for water.
So where the, where is that percentage going? When it comes in and it's collected, is it being placed in an account?
It would go into the the fund balance of the fund and so, which is in that air, that utility. And at the point when we are needing to make those debt service payments, we'd be able to draw from that.
So is that my, my question is, is it protected so that we aren't going to BDO
It, yeah.
for monies to pay for stuff because we spent the collections in the first couple of years, we, while we were under construction?
Right. No, the way that because of with the pro forma that we worked with LRB on and the need for those those rate increases to be able to help cover those debt payments when they would come on, that essentially it's putting that cash aside and and it is because it is an enterprise fund, it needs to stay in the enterprise fund. So unless we're proposing to transfer that out. Um, but with their pro forma, they have um, their their capital improvement uh, plan, their their replacement plan. And they've got that projected out. So all of that's built into that and that model. And so it knows how much cash reserve we would need. So then when those debt payments do come online,
We've got a pool to draw from. Okay, thank you, Justin.
Yep. Um, and then in uh, storm sewer, there's a big increase. Um, there's a couple of projects we're funding in the storm. Um, using existing storm funds. Um, part of it is the the surf wave. Um, so the funding, the match needed for the surf wave project. And so we did receive some other sources, but that's part of why there's such a big increase in the storm, but um, and then the medical services, there's a small decrease. Um, in fiscal year twenty five, we used a a Fiscally, or twenty five, we used a a large amount of their prior year fund balance to transfer to the CIP fund as part of the facility there. For the to, for the funds they're setting aside to be able to rebuild their training tower. And the amount that's proposed in this year's budget or in fiscal year twenty six budget is less. So it makes the overall budget for the fund lower, so they're not losing revenue, we're just seeing less of prior year excess fund balance to build the transfer. For uh that project.
So I have a question about the parking and mobility, so we budgeted eight hundred and fifty one thousand dollars last year, thinking that's what we would have in revenue. We're now budgeting two point seven million dollars of transferring it from BDO, are you saying that? Or is it all coming from BDO or are we saying that there's eight hundred and fifty one thousand dollars coming from?
At this point, the eight hundred and fifty thousand was from BDO as well, so everything that's gone into the Parking and Mobility Fund has come from BDO lease revenue. If the if the parking were to come online during December twenty six, we obviously would look at that and and could possibly reduce the amount. That we do transfer from BDO.
So I should say when?
When, yeah, so, but yeah, correct, the 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 two amounts, the twenty five and the twenty six amounts were all funded through BDO lease revenue. Any other questions on?
Man, it looks like it's almost done to me. From the outside.
Right?
It is exciting, it's it's I my, I I just, it's kind of funny, my mom works for Beehive Insurance and they're the ones. They did some of the underwriting with the the contractors that we're using, and so every time she's up here, I always tease her to go look at the big. Big cement thing that they they helped with. Anyway. A couple other, the last couple items in regards to just changes in 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 revenues. Our internal service funds, those three for fleet facilities, IT and risk, total two point three million. As an internal service group, as they experience expenses related to what their operations and also personnel. Those revenues are funded through the city and so we budget through, we we make sure we we budget enough to cover those costs. But fleet facilities, they're seeing an increase. And a lot of that's related to replacement, it's also related to their depreciation expense that we have to account for, it's just an accounting thing. As to why we've increased that there, IT, it's related and and also fleet or facilities and IT, part of that increases due to. Contract. Maintenance is that just continue to rise, and so obviously we have to have a revenue to cover that, so we would we've increased those revenues to cover those. In the grant funds, the big decrease there under the miscellaneous grants and donations of a million. What we've done is in the budget, we adopted in fiscal year twenty five, it included the full amount that we received from the state for the. For the homeless medication. What we've done right now is we've just budgeted for the personnel at this point, and once we have the work, we'll do a, we'll propose. In a friendly amendment before we adopt the final budget, what that amount means to be to fix that, so. This is just, and it's just an accounting to adjust for what we're projecting for wages, and then whatever we end up receiving, we'll we'll correct that before we adopt the final budget. So overall, this puts us at a total increase to the city budget of just over twenty million dollars or seven and a half percent. One thing I forgot to mention earlier. With the general fund increasing approximately five point four percent. I went back and looked at the last ten years just to kind of see what we historically have done. Budgetarily to the general plan each year, and on average, we've actually increased about four point nine, almost five percent each year. Has been what the average has been over the last decade, so we're right in line to what what our average has been for the increase to the general fund, but. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, you can.
Jump into the next. Right, so and look, so the next discussion is to talk about the uses of BDO lease revenue. So this is, this is a kind of a historical graph and also a projected graph, you can see. This is the revenues that we've received over time. And then where we're projecting, so in the future, we we calculated an approximate a half a percent increase per year. Obviously, that can vary each year depending on the activities out there and. But everything in working with the lawyer is still very positive in the spaces they've filled out there, so. In looking at the breakdown, so each year, if you, as you all are aware. The amount of funds that we receive in BDO lease revenue, we propose in the budget for the next year to use. And so this is gives you an idea of what those uses have been, it's kind of hard to see on that graph, but the the big. The bottom part, that big part, that's all that's gone to CIP, so this is looking at fiscal years twenty to what we're proposing for fiscal year twenty six. Kind of shows you how much of the the funds being used has gone towards what type of what type of expense. So obviously, a large portion has gone towards CIP projects. The tan area, middle, those are RDA, RDAs that have received funding through BDO lease revenue. And then the orange area, the yellow. Yellow area, that is, that's used to the general fund, so if you can see the last two years, that portion has increased. As we now have the debt service for Marshall White. And then the very top, that's the Parking and Mobility Fund, again, as we were just talking about, that has increased as well with. The amount of funds going to BDO to the Parking and Mobility Fund. Just want to point out, the reason you see some ups and downs, part of it's timing of what we appropriated. And so there's been some years that we've, so in fiscal year twenty one. Post covid, we did not, we did not appropriate all the funds that we had received. And so the next year, we we appropriated more than what had been received in that prior year, so that's why you see a huge increase. We were able to do a lot of projects that year, and that's why it decreased again in twenty three, because twenty two is using not only the prior year, but. Here, funds as well. And then the reason that twenty six is down from twenty five. Is mainly due to the million dollars that we pulled forward from Quality Neighborhoods that we used this year instead of next year. So that's why there's that difference between this year and next year, and also this year, again, we had an extra million or two. That was included in this in fiscal year twenty five, so all those things kind of play into why we see ups and downs in the usage. Looking down the road as far as what we're projecting. Based on the ordinance, which I I am working on an updated ordinance, if if you recall, last year, we had proposed an amended a new ordinance. That included a a transfer to the general fund and council decided not to move forward with that. And one of the changes in that was to also fund the the debt related to the RDA for Continental. So we still need to amend the ordinance to include that, but in here, I do show that as a separate item, that's the orange. Block is the the Wonder Block debt service, so this is looking at fiscal years twenty six through twenty fifty eight, which is the life of of that debt. The bottom, the tan, it's kind of hard to see on there, but that's that is the Marshall White debt service, which expires in approximately twenty fifty, I believe. And then you can see some of the other portions, and then that big blue portion would be the amount available for other CIP RDA related projects over time. And so that bottom portion is what would be in the ordinance, and then the rest is what would be available to appropriate each year. This is looking at numerically, if you want to look at it numerically, so again. The the ordinance list that we would use the funding to help pay for the Marshall White debt service. We also have a couple more years of the CBD mall that we're putting funding into for related to the debt service with with. With the CBD mall area, there's the RDA debt service. At this point, Quality Neighborhoods fiscal year twenty six would have been the fifth year. And so there will be discussions with administration and and what gets proposed to council as far as that goes with that five year expiring in fiscal year twenty six. We also have the Union Station land purchase, fiscal year twenty six is year three of seven. And then we also have in the ordinance, the funding for public arts and maintenance. Critical project contingency and the community plan project, so you can see those amounts that are committed. And what would be available based on our projections right now. So this is what's proposed in the budget for next year, again, we have the debt payment for Marshall White, so these are all per the ordinance. The Marshall White payment, the CBD mall. Would show Quality Neighborhoods that we've removed that since we pulled it forward on the Union Station line purchase, and then the Wonder Block debt. Approximately five and a half million. And then the other things that are proposed to be funded right now, we've got the hundred and two thousand five hundred for public art and art maintenance. And then we are proposing right now four point eight million towards various projects, whether that be the CIP fund, the airport fund or the golf fund. Makes up a total of four point eight million towards projects. And then the non CIPs that are proposed to be funded, and I'll go, I have a list of all those projects so that you can see what they are. But as far as the non CIP projects and the non ordinance items, this includes the debt for the MBA to be able to make that debt payment. Also putting some more funding into part, the Parking and Mobility for contingency, really, that's to cover the any. Operational and the wages of the employee in the Parking Mobility Fund, pending getting those, starting to see funding. Through the actual implementation of parking. We're also proposing half a million dollar transfer to the airport for operations. There, the way that, and and we're we're having a bigger discussion with the airport group. But they have, and as all, many of you are aware, they operationally have struggled at a delta, a significant delta, so this is just. An infusion to try and help the fund at this point, I know CBD is looking at. At operations out there and what we can do to close that, but we've been, we've been okay with the airport fund because. Funds that we received during covid from cares and ARPA. But with those funds running out, we were back where we were prior to covid, and so we're proposing to. So this would come from the general fund, but it would be coming from BDO to help with funding operations of the airport. And then again, the hundred and twenty one thousand for elections. Other five hundred thousand, there is currently an interfund loan between the CBD area and Twenty Fifth Street. Twenty Fifth Street's expired. But we do, administration wants to put some additional funding into CBD to be able to do some improvements to the junction area. And we found this was a way to knock out two things, where we're paying off an interfund loan, but also putting funding into the CBD area to be able to do a refresh. And so the proposal is that the five hundred thousand would go under the Twenty Fifth RDA area, and then we would make that interfund loan payment back to. CBD so that they have excess extra funds set aside that when the time when we're ready to do that refresh, we have funding. So fiscal year twenty five included five hundred thousand, fiscal year twenty six includes another five hundred thousand. And then fiscal year twenty seven will include a small amount, I think it's like three hundred thousand, and that will fully pay off that interfund loan between those two areas. And then the last item, we have a loan with Los Credit Union, which currently is mainly interest. It it and then has a balloon payment at the end. We've, the the actual payment's only been around sixty thousand, administration's proposing to increase that to three hundred thousand for next year. And then we're going to propose in the twenty seven budgets to do the same thing so that we can pay off that loan early. What that'll do, it'll save us about, I think it was about sixty thousand dollars in interest.
What does it do?
I think it was twenty twenty nine was the year. And so this'll, this'll pay it off two years early and save the save the RDA, save the city about sixty thousand dollars in interest. So that's one thing that we're proposing to do is to to try and get that paid off early.
What did we buy with that loan?
That was the St. Anne, St. Anne's.
Oh, oh, let's see, okay.
So those are all the items that make up the fourteen million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred use of BDO lease revenue for fiscal year twenty six. Here is a list of all the projects in the CIP fund that make up the two point nine million that's being transferred to the CIP fund. We have Union Station improvements, this is related to the building. Maintenance items needed there. We also have. Projects are related to to facility improvements, as you can see, security solutions for facilities, general facility improvements. The exhaust system at all the fire stations, the fire station fiber replacement. All of those are are city owned facilities that don't necessarily have any other sources of funding, and we don't have proper maintenance budgets, and so this is. A way, a mechanism that we can continue to keep up with our facilities. Castile Field dugouts, Lester Park and Surge Outfield, those are all ramp projects. So these are the amounts that we're proposing to fund for the match, and then in January next year, though, will be applied for 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 ramp. Lester Park did receive some funding this calendar year. So we have a, we'll have a year end budget opening that will include appropriating those, so this will be another year of funding for the Lester Park. Golden Hours Pickleball Courts. And then there's some other funding for continued backflow prevention, replacement across the city. Playground enhancements, the Grand View Park, that two hundred and fifty thousand, we actually also have an additional four hundred thousand from a developer. As part of their project. Receiving, so between that and the two hundred and fifty thousand, we're going to be able to do some improvements there at Grand View Park. And then also funding for wayfinding signs, and then the the community plan. Funding is proposed to go under the Madison Pedestrian and Bicycle Connection Project. In the golf and airport funds, the amount that's going to the airport is four hundred and fifty three thousand to fund. The projects listed here, part of one of those is our annual entitlement, as you recall. We get so much per year and then we are required that ten percent match. This will be the last year before we've met the employments, so that'll go up the following year, but this last year is only. A smaller amount, so the match needed is only sixteen thousand. The decorative security fence, they would like to replace the fence there in the terminal yard with a steel rod fence. We received a grant for thirty thousand that requires a thirty thousand match from the city, so this will allow us to be able to replace that fence. We also were proposing to fund the terminal seating to replace those in the terminal. I just don't know how many of you have been out there, sat in any of those, but they are definitely in need of of replacement, so we're proposing to fund that. The terminal restroom originally was proposed to use it more city funds, but. At the airport, working with the FAA, we were able to use some a federal funds, NCA funds to help with. Doing a remodel of the restroom, these are the two restrooms in the basement of the terminal building. And so it just need, we needed to do a match for that, so that's the fourteen thousand that would go along with what the FAA is going to provide to be able to do that remodel. And the last one is related to doing some zero scape around the the entryways of the airport. So in total, four hundred and fifty thousand of the airport, and then in the golf fund. The continued funding of the irrigation system, all the improvements being done right now are at Mount Ogden, there's still quite a bit left that needs to be done. This was the amount that we. This isn't the total amount needed, but this is the amount that we were able to to fund through the budgeting process to help with the irrigation improvements. And then I don't know if any of you have seen the shed at El Monte for the golf carts. That's a World War Two shed, it's it's in very. Yeah, for one, it's not big enough, it doesn't hold all of the golf carts, and two, it's it is, it is falling, it hopefully doesn't. So this funding will, this four hundred thousand will will replace that, that short shed. Any questions on any, anything BDO lease revenue related? There was a lot, man.
I I do have a question, you know, several slides back, you kind of showed the block, the block. Ordinance. Do we have anything in our ordinance that? Gives us guidance, is that how much percentage that needs to stay so that we don't continue to be seduced to keep eating away at it till it's gone? Till that blue block is gone.
The only thing the ordinance specifies is that at least fifty percent of what's not already specified needs to go towards capital related project.
Okay, that's.
And probably that's the big thing is at least fifty percent of whatever is used needs to go towards capital projects, the rest can go towards capital or operations.
So fifty percent, huh? Where are we at?
As far as.
How much, how much other than? You know, it looks like we're not quite at fifty percent there, so.
Well, so that's fifty percent of whatever's left, so when you take, when you look here and you say if we're going to use fourteen million. And we take off all these items that are already for the ordinance, that eight million is what fifty percent of that needs to go towards capital. When we go to program the budget and what's. Okay, that's, those are the specifications that the ordinance has right now. Any other questions? You get me for one more, so.
The MBA.
The really long. The really long. All right. So this will be the same presentation that I will provide to you as these tonight. But just to, if there's any questions with it, so the, the municipal authority budget that's been proposed. For your consideration. So currently there is, is the debt in that fund for the municipal, for the parking structures. So that total debt amount is just under sixty three million dollars. We have started making payments. The first payments are all interest only payments. The first payment that we'll start to see a reduction in principal balance will be in January of next year. So as far as the budget goes, there's a slight change in the budget for fiscal year twenty six of five hundred and twenty thousand. And that's just related to the change in the debt service payment for next year. So that's the only adjustment in there. Any funds that are related to the actual construction of the, of the, the parking towers. Those will be budgeted through any carryover if they're not fully spent by the end of the year. So this four million represents just the, the debt service related to. To the parking structures. Any questions on the MBA budget? Well, I thank you, listen, thanks for listening to me for a little bit. Appreciate it. I know it's a lot of numbers. So, thank you.
All right, any other?
Here, I had a constituent reach out with concerns about. Traffic flow during the marathon with the construction on Valley Drive where. There's now not access out through the south end. And then if those residents are needing to leave the area or have vehicles come in, they're going to come in on Twelfth Street by Rainbow Gardens. That's really the only entry and exit point at that, at that point. So the concern was, you know, if there was. Know the runners go under the road there, so they're not crossing the road. But with Ogden Canyon being closed, that traffic could back up. A ways. And so I, anyway, it's just something that. I think in years past, it hasn't been as much of an issue because of the construction. It wasn't happening on that spot. So. That's just, just something I thought they, they were concerned about. Maybe if there were emergency vehicles that needed to get in, would they, would they have the ability to get in okay? Or is that going to be a problem?
Yeah, if you want to. Sounds like.
Yeah. So, yes, Valley Drive right there, Twenty Street is closed and it's going to be closed for some time. So. With the marathon coming down out of the canyon. Cars are not going to be able to turn and go east up the canyon. However, what runners are going to do, they're actually. And this happened last year, they're going to be able to, there's, there's a gate right there on the barricade where they can come in and go down the tunnel. And so cars will be able to come out and, and make a westbound turn. And so, and all cars are also going to be able to come in. Eastbound up until right there at Valley Drive intersection and turn and go up. So should be able to get to the golf course, get to all those apartments. Get to Rainbow Gardens, get to the dinosaur park. All those movements should be good. But there will also be, I believe, P, police stationed. Right there just to the east side of that, guarding people from being able to go up the canyon. But runners will be filtering. On the north side of the road to be able to cut through where that gate is.
So I just, I guess the, the, in years past, I don't know, it's been an issue with any traffic backing up. But with that now blocked on the one side, just that might be something to be aware of to make sure we don't have an issue there.
Yeah, because traffic isn't coming down out of the canyon, they should actually have a pretty, pretty left hand turn. Because there shouldn't be anything coming down, though we'll have police right there. I do know in years past, and this is probably what the concern is, is. They haven't been using the tunnel and they've been actually running around that way. But since we were able to. Open up and, and get a structure put in place where that can be opened up, the tunnel can be reused. Then there shouldn't be any conflicts of, of vehicles turning there.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just so you know, we may have some First Amendment auditors tonight. They were at the reporters this afternoon and they've also had some contact with the police today. So we will have an extra officer in the room.
I don't know what a First Amendment auditor is.
Mr. Vigilante.
Thank you.
They just like to test. Test the. You know, how much freedom they have given a situation.
I get it now. Thank you. I was thinking that.
Then the last thing is that we have an informational item, the petition for the historic designation on. Twenty three, twenty five Madison. So just an informational item. If you want to take a look at what the landmarks.
I don't think, is the lettering, I don't think the letter is included in the.
One will be sent after the meeting today.
Thank you. All right, anything else? I'm going to eat my cookie in peace.